Thank you, Dr. Thor.
Present.
And with my presence, we have six board members present and our student trustee. With that, we have this evening, the presentation of proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. In presenting will be Ms. Leanne Bone, our chief operating officer, and Ms. Kim Grineo, our vice chancellor of business services. So please join us for the presentation and we'll move ahead. So nice to see you. Thank you for being with us for such an important discussion.
Yes, that is on. Good evening, Secretary Sullivan, members of the governing board, chancellor, colleagues, and guests. We are happy to be here this evening to talk about the next steps with our budget and have lots of new material that we're excited to share with you and with the audience. I'm going to let Kim Grineo kick us off and then we'll do some tag teaming throughout the presentation.
It's okay, don't argue, all right?
So Mrs. Sullivan and Leanne and I were chatting before the presentation and I told her, I, full disclosure, I make my little cheat sheet on how I address the board every time I come. If you look at every folder I have, it's written down. And I was writing down Secretary Sullivan and I went, oh, shoot, I bet you she's going to ask me about a song. And those of you who've been here know I'm very musically challenged. So Leanne actually came up with a great song, which is "Under Pressure." And I think some context around that is there's a whole lot of pressure everywhere right now, which I think we all know. There certainly is pressure around the conversation we had in January, what we've been talking with colleges about over the last month, what we'll provide some final information about for today. For everybody who thinks it's no pressure at all to increase budgets, it can be a challenge to do that. It can also be a challenge to reduce budgets. So there's a little bit of pressure, I think, all the way around the system. So that was a great song choice.
Wow.
Let me say that.
Yeah, you just came up with it just like that. So it's not as if it's top of mind or anything.
That would have been my panic attack.
Yeah, so thank you for that. Okay, please go ahead.
So thank you, Secretary Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of S G E C. I'm still trying to make sure I get all those letters correct. Colleagues and guests, my name is Kim Grineo. I'm the Vice Chancellor of Business Services and happy to present the first part of the presentation today. And also, if we could go to the next slide, please. Our agenda for this evening is in somewhat typical format for our March presentation. We'll do updates from the January presentation for the general fund. We'll also provide and speak to final revenue numbers, which we don't have in January, we do have right now, and final allocations to the colleges for the new budget allocation model. We'll provide an update on auxiliary funds, restricted funds, and also a little bit more detail on Prop 301 and 207. We will then move into capital funds and we will talk about our new capital and technology improvement program, some work that we did in that space, and some awards that we have that A B C, the Advisory Budget Council, has worked on and recommended. And then we'll provide an update on the deferred maintenance program and then round it out with next steps for the budget adoption process. And with that also, we can go to the next slide and we will step right into the general fund. And so to start us off, we've combined all of the revenue details for the general fund in this first slide. This is the multi-year look at the general fund that we've been showing now for a few years with the proposed budget year of 2526 highlighted in purple. And new property taxes from new construction came in a little underestimates and we were just notified last week that SRP and LOO taxes came in a little higher than estimates. So we were pretty excited that the total ended up being a reduction, not excited about the reduction part, but it was just under $200,000 in total from what we presented in January, which we think is pretty good estimating from the budget office, which we appreciate. Tuition, the next line down tuition for related to increases from enrollment is about $7 million. That is, of course, a combination of upper division, lower division courses, and anything else where tuition is generated in the general fund. Also presented is the reallocation of STEM funds, which is the 20% allowable based on state statute. That again is the same as what we presented in January. Finally, we have increased the interest income to, which better reflects our current reality, and the total estimated revenues for fiscal year 26 as proposed is just under 799 million. If we can go to the next slide, Elsa will launch into expenditures. And of note, at the bottom there, you'll see the expenditures are exactly the same as the revenues on the previous slide, which indicate the balanced budget that we have been striving for. Similarly to revenues, we've included the expenditure detail in this multi-year look rather than in additional slides. Again, that purple column is the fiscal year 26 budget that we're talking about. The required hasn't changed from previous presentations, but we did provide the detail here. I know in comments in the past, but you can see it specifically here, the largest change there is related to the Arizona State Retirement System rate change for a reduction to the system of just over a million dollars. And of course, all of our employees will see that as well, starting on July 1 in our paycheck. So that should be good news, I think, all the way around. Non-mandatory expenses are listed there at 25.8 million, with the vast majority of that being year five of the compensation plan, with a little bit of funding for the Maricopa Leadership Program. The increase in the bridge funding is a couple lines down from there, that's the $5 million. That's will bring the total bridge funding from Prop 207 to support the general fund to a total of $10 million each year. And the number right above that, the reduction to balance, is the amount that gets us to that balanced budget. And in the presentation we did in January, that was about 1.3 million. It is now down to a half a million dollars. And just as a reminder, that reduction is taken at the system-wide bucket or the district-wide bucket versus moving that to the colleges or district office divisions. And with that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa. And this is a new slide that we've added in doing a more detailed analysis of really the designated reserves within fund balance in the general fund. So again, pointing you to the purple column, you will see total ongoing revenues equal total ongoing expenses. That is the definition of a balanced budget. Beginning fund balance then is not expected to change. If we go to the next grouping of those designated reserves, what happens with that $177 million? We've talked, I think, at length about the 10% of revenues being for financial stability that is part of board policy. The next line are additional reserves, which are right now about 4%. There is a desire to have that around 6% and it had been at 6% for a few years at least. And the reason why it is not there now is to get the uncommitted fund balance to not be negative. We needed to reduce that line and that is largely due to the Quasmire judgment related to the Maricopa County property tax issue. Over the years, whether that gets resolved in a different way or there are other ways for us to increase that back up to 6% or more, that would be the desire. Those two numbers together, the total of 16% is about two months of operations, which for a system our size, that's probably on the lower end of where we really should be. So that's certainly something that we keep our eyes on. The next line, the system-wide strategic efforts, we have another slide on that, so I'll hold my comments on that. The next line down from there is bridge funding for allocation model implementation. That is not to be confused with the Prop 207 bridge funding that supports the full general fund. We will figure out different words to use next year as we have these conversations. This is all about the new budget allocation model and the commitment of the system for the three colleges that are facing reductions. This 3.3 million is the total of those three college reductions. The colleges have all been made aware of what the approach is to access those funds. It's a fairly easy process. And this is just, again, the confirmation and the reminder that those dollars are available if they are needed. And then that last line or college and division carry forward dollars that are allowed to be carried forward from one budget year to the next budget year. And then that leaves us with an uncommitted fund balance of zero, as you can see. If we can go to the next slide, then we'll talk about the fund balance designated for system-wide strategic efforts. We wanted to provide an update on the use to date of this line item. As a reminder, these were recoveries of lost tuition during the pandemic, which were funded by federal HERF funds in 2021. On the right-hand side, the right-hand bullet, if you will, are the intended uses of that reserve. So I won't read that to everybody. Everybody I know can read it themselves. The total amount designated for these purposes was just under $39 million. To date, we've committed or spent a little over $11 million. Some of the commitments are for multiple years, as noted in the detailed schedule. For instance, AdAstra for the strategic scheduling solution is a commitment of five years at just over $5.5 million. The library system is an 11-year commitment, so we wanted to make sure we called those out. The remaining 27.6 million may be used for, for instance, the results of the strike force work for which there are RFPs out to bid. But the point of these dollars is about system-wide strategic uses of these dollars versus lots of different options that could frankly be used. And with that, we'll go to the next slide, which will provide the new budget allocation model, final allocations. As shared during prior presentations and when visiting all of the colleges in February, we were waiting for final revenue amounts to generate the final allocations to the colleges and the district office. The next two slides detail those final allocations. The first are the college allocations, that first, sorry, the first section that you're looking at now on this slide are the college allocations. The next slide will speak to the rest of them. So on this particular one, and these dollars were shared with colleges on March 3. The first column of numbers is the fiscal year 25 adopted budget, and this has been our comparator in all of our comparisons when we speak to what 26 looks like as compared to 25. The second column are the initial allocations, which is what was shared with the board in January and what were shared with all of the colleges all throughout the month of February. The next column over of dollar amounts are the final allocations to the colleges for fiscal year 2026. The last column then represents the percent of change from that 50, or from that 25 allocation to the 26 final allocations. It was shared last week that an additional 6.4 million was added to the college allocation pool. This is primarily due to that bridge funding related from Prop 207. And that additional budget is included in the total $633 million allocated to the colleges. The real result of that additional 6.4 million is that colleges that were gaining resources gained a little bit more in '26 and colleges that were finding the need to reduce budgets reduced their budgets by a little bit less in 2026. So the next slide will go into the final allocations for district office and district-wide. That first line there are the college allocation, total college allocations brought over from the previous slide. The district office is held flat from '25 to '26, which is what our commitment was. District-wide has a slight reduction and again, just the reminder that that is the bucket that took the half-million-dollar reduction from, to balance the budget. Just to comment on the contingency line, it is zeros all the way across. This is really just to keep it front of mind for everyone that a system our size should have some sort of a system-wide contingency. Over the coming years, we will continue to try to work towards having a contingency for the system. So the total expense budget to be allocated is at $808 million, which you may notice is more than the 798 million on previous slides. That is $10 million more. And this is due to the bridge funding that is provided by Prop 207. At the end of the year, we moved $10 million of eligible expenses out of the general fund and into the Prop 207 restricted funds. And so we find the need that we need to actually be able to overspend in the general fund in order to be able to do that. Otherwise, we would be underallocating our resources. We will be exploring options in the future on what might be a more straightforward way to look at the funds across the system, but that, that's another iteration probably for fiscal year '27. Next slide, please, Elsa. So after the presentation to the governing board in January and really throughout recent years and probably even prior to that, there we've received several inquiries about how the allocation to the district office and district-wide pools are used. In response to that, we added a handful of slides to the budget briefings with the colleges in February, and we thought it would be helpful to include that in today's presentation as well. This slide is a pie chart of the various divisions and how the 85.4 million for the district office is allocated among the divisions or functions. And the next three slides are probably a little bit more informative, so we'll go on to the next slide, please, Elsa. These next slides provide more detail in the far-right column of the primary functions performed by the various divisions or departments. The divisions in these tables are ordered from highest dollars to lowest dollars based on the fiscal year '26 budget. The second column of numbers provides the total of the district office budget or percent of the total district office budget, sorry about that. And then that third column, the second column of percentages, is the percent of the total district-wide general fund budget. Item of note, this does not account for what happens in these areas across the entire system. So for instance, the, I typically go right to that first line, information technology, just under $20 million. That is 2.5% of the total district-wide general fund budget, but that does not include IT spend across the entire system. We think that there is an interest in that information as well, and so that will be some work we'll do in the coming months as well and probably work that into future presentations. So we can go to the next slide, Elsa. There, these are the next four divisions and what their primary functions are. And then the next slide presents the last five different divisions or departments as well. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please, Elsa, and we'll look at the district-wide allocations. So this is a pie chart of how that $64.1, $64.2 million are allocated across the district-wide area. This is really, and really the district office piece too, is really about adding some transparency about how the district office and district-wide allocations are used. For district-wide, they are divided into the four different buckets. There are some details provided in each of those boxes. Insurance and claims, it doesn't have its own box. I think it's somewhat self-explanatory, although I will point out that there are some insurance premiums that are funded at the colleges as well. So again, another thing that might be worth looking at across the entire system, how much are insurance and claims costing the entire system? And so we'll look to expand upon some of that information in the future. So student scholarships or student support includes things as scholarship tournament funds, student accident insurance, bad debt. Employee benefits includes such things as professional growth and tuition waivers. I want to just take a second and point out that these are all about things that cannot be allocated in advance to the colleges or the district office divisions, because this is all about how they are used by either students or employees. So as those actuals occur, my office actually is responsible for moving the budget out to match those expenditures, so that nobody else is really paying for them because they're funded from the system-wide budget. We have tried in the past to figure out how to allocate that differently, and we have not found a way yet that actually makes any sense, that doesn't penalize either employees or students or colleges on the other end. So we've continued to do it in this manner. With that, we'll move out of the general fund and move to the auxiliary fund.
Excuse me, Ms. Grineo. There's a lot more to cover here. Given that we have had this presentation before, et cetera, our questions may be fewer than they might be in other regards, but board members, I want to stop at this point and see if you have any comments or questions to the general fund before we move into auxiliary fund discussions. I'll look at Ms. Butler, any questions or comments on this?
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I guess I do have a question. You've mentioned that the contingency fund is zero and that we would like to have that have a balance. Can you, there's a wish list. What would we, what would we like with the district, with the system of this size? What would we like that contingency fund to look like?
Thank you, Secretary Sullivan, Ms. Butler. So I think that's a good question. I would love to stand up and say this is the magic number. I don't have a magic number for you. I think those are really conversations that we need to have with A B C as well, because what we've also done is we've also encouraged the colleges to build their contingencies too. And so what we really need to talk about is what is an appropriate level of contingency? I'm not sure I would ever say that I think 10% of a budget is an appropriate level of contingency. Is 1% good? Is 1% enough? Is 1% too much? So I think as a system, we need to have those conversations so that we are doing everything we can to get the resources out to the programs and expenses where they should go, but being wise in our stewardship to know that there are always going to be things that we are not, that we don't know about ahead of it. I always laugh and say, I never got my crystal ball when I got this job. I don't think anybody has one. So it'd be wise for us to have something in place that allows for things that we were, that we didn't, simply weren't able to plan for. Thank you. Hey, thank you for that. So auxiliary fund, this is my last slide, and then you all get to hear from Leanne, so you'll be happy to know I will be done. So for the auxiliary fund, we begin with estimated beginning balances and then look at revenue detail and expenses occurring in the auxiliary funds. For revenue, tuition and fees, for revenue, tuition and fees include out-of-state online tuition, course fee revenue, tuition from non-credit courses, and have a variance from fiscal year '25 to '26 of about 7.8 million. This increase in budget is based on experience in '25, along with anticipated enrollment increases for fiscal year '26. The decrease of $12.1 million estimated for grants and donations from fiscal year '25 to '26, really, and this is more of a historical thing, in past years, this number had been increased because of the potential and availability of using federal HERF funds to offset losses in revenues, because the, our ability to capture lost revenues under those dollars was not limited to tuition. So there was the ability in some of our auxiliary enterprises to be able to capture that. So that number went up. So really, this decline of $12.1 million is really a writing of what the typical number should be. So I wish I had a better explanation than that, but that's really what it is. The transfers in for the auxiliary fund are really related to the skill center support, which is about $8.3 million for fiscal year '26. And with that, I'll turn it over to Leanne for the rest of the slides, and I'll certainly be available for questions at the end.
Thank you, Ms. Grineo.
Next slide, please, Elsa. So we'll start here speaking about the restricted fund. And one of the things that Kim and I have talked about and are trying to work into the presentation is looking at our funds, all of our funds, a little bit more robustly, taking kind of an all-funds approach. So you'll see a little bit more detail on some of the non-general funds, including calling out fund balances as well, because that will become relevant as we talk a little bit later about the capital and technology improvement plan of funding. You'll see that the restricted fund budget in fiscal '26 is nearly identical to the prior year's budget. But I'll point out some additional information here with the exception of state STEM funds. Really, all other grants and contracts generally flow through, through the colleges. Only about 11% of those flow through the district office. The vast majority of federal student financial aid, about 106 million, is Pell Grants. And then the foundation, we showed there, $3.5 million coming in from the foundation. Those are funds that the foundation pays directly to the district, so those are running through our financial statements. But in addition, the district provides substantial funding directly to students. Looking at my notes here to make sure I get these amounts right, they've shared with us that they anticipate providing about $700,000 in scholarships, half a million dollars in emergency aid, and another 2.1 million in stipends and student support's going directly to students. So that's the support that we get from the foundation and our students as well. Next slide, please. So another one of the things that we wanted to talk about a little bit is put some words to these propositions. As somebody who's newer to the district, I get the propositions confused sometimes. So just by way of reference, in November of 2000, voters approved Prop 301, so it increased the state's sales tax from 5% to 5.6%. And it was intended to provide additional monies to all education levels, K-12 and higher ed as well. The tax money that flows to Maricopa is specifically set aside for investment and workforce development programs. And so as you'll see, sales tax revenue can fluctuate a little bit with the economy, but we have seen growth here. And you'll see that we have recognized modest growth here, $800,000 year-over-year. We're running quite a bit higher than that. We're running about 12% over budget actually in our revenue this year, which is great, but with the, some of the instability or uncertainty we're seeing in the economy, we opt to budget our revenues very conservatively. As you'll see, as you saw with the general fund and you will see with upcoming funds, we've increased the interest income here, so the interest is generally what we earn on that fund balance, and as the fund balances grow, the interest earnings do as well. Those two are modest increases. We're not looking to break the bank on those, and we want to make sure we hit those numbers. We forecast spending at $14.4 million in fiscal '26 on a variety of workforce-related recurring expenditures. So these include faculty programs and the Maricopa Corporate College. You'll notice on here that we actually changed the ongoing budget for the college workforce programs and equipment by $4.7 million. So embedded in that number last year was a combination of ongoing expenses and then non-recurring expenses. And so we've broken that out, and the final year of the programs that will sunset and or that will no longer have Prop 301 funding are shown below in that one-time expenditures. So $14.4 million in spending, so we have a little bit of capacity if you look at our ongoing revenue compared to our ongoing expenditures, and then estimating an ending fund balance of just under $30 million. Next slide, please. Moving on to Prop 207, so this is the Smart and Safe Arizona Excise Tax Fund. November of 2020, voters approved Prop 207, and that allowed the sale of marijuana in a 16% excise tax. There are a number of entities that benefit from this excise tax, including community colleges. Our funds must be spent on workforce development programs, job training, career, and technical education, and STEM programming, which is why it's in the restricted fund. This has a larger fund balance, so we anticipate beginning fiscal '26 with almost $45 million in fund balance. We were a little slow to start spending this. It was a brand-new revenue source. We didn't know how much we'd bring in. And so this is prior to my time here, but Kim made absolutely the right financial decision and making sure we took it a little bit slow. We are seeing very stable revenues in this fund. And so at this point, five years in, I think we're feeling more comfortable considering these ongoing revenues. You'll see here as well, we've increased the excise tax year-over-year about half a million dollars. This revenue comes in twice a year, I believe, so it's a little bit harder to predict where we're going to end the year, but we are seeing stronger collections here and then the increase in interest income as well. So we plan to continue to support the skill centers with these funds in fiscal 2026, as well as an additional $5 million to offset general fund expenses, which is the bridge funding that Kim referred to earlier. And then we've increased funding for bachelor's degrees from $2 million to $3 million, so that will increase, that will be used to fund the third launch year for new programs rather than the current two that we have. This recommendation was vetted by the Advisory Budget Council and supported by them as well. We continue to include $5 million each for operations support for recently launched, for operations and supportive recently-launched programs. So those are the last two lines under those ongoing expenditures sections. Those are up for revision and reconsideration. We don't think we're quite spending all of those, and so that will be, we'll be coming back with perhaps some additional recommendations for those in the future. All right, next slide, please. So moving on to our capital fund, I guess this is, this is where the real money is here. $167.2 million is what we expect to start the year with. And just as a reminder, the way that we fund this capital fund is through a tax levy shift, and so on an ongoing basis, $58.5 million. And then we shifted a portion of that tax over to this fund for a total of $4.2 million and then interest income as well. So that brings the total annual operating revenue for the capital fund to $65.7 million. You'll notice our ongoing expenditures are 68.7, so a little bit over that, but with the size of this fund balance and the fact that we tend to underspend some of those ongoing lines, we're not concerned about that, what would be labeled as a structural imbalance. If nothing else, we know that the next and actually final opportunity to do some of that tax shift will come in fiscal '28, and that will be almost $14 million. So if it comes down to it, we could look at providing some additional ongoing funding through that source. You'll look at these ongoing expenditures here that are actually fairly consistent year-over-year with the exception of the district-wide capital expenditures by category, which we'll talk about. actually fairly consistent year over year with the except, exception of the district-wide capital expenditures by category, which we'll talk about in an upcoming slide. Um, and then another area that is new here is the, uh, district-wide technology refresh of five million dollars. So through the capital and technology improvement, uh, uh, budget process, we learned that a lot of colleges are in need of funding for laptop, desktop and server refresh. So really those laptops and desktops at our CIO over there should generally be replaced every three years. So it's really part of your, your ongoing, uh, budget. Every, every year you're replacing about a third of your fleet. So what we learned is this probably isn't happening, happening, um, consistently throughout our colleges. And that one of the ways we could help is to find some funding that was, sorry, there's bugs flying around. Um, but find some funding. I know, right? I have hand gestures that go with the presentation to make it exciting. Um, one of the ways we could help is is to, is to find some funding that was, was not being fully utilized, program it for this, so that's available to the colleges starting in fiscal twenty six. And we'll be asking our ITS team to look at creating a process that colleges can request funding from that. Um, under the one-time expenditures, uh, we've added a line for system-wide central plant upgrades of ten million dollars. So that's a new line there. In previous years, we've actually, we'll talk about me, uh, deferred maintenance, uh, in just a moment, but we've actually pulled money out of our annual deferred maintenance, um, budget to fund this multi-year, very important system-wide project. Um, given the fund balance in the capital fund, we know we're able to, and we thought it was important to actually set aside funding for this and leave that deferred maintenance pool whole. That will help us to chip away at our deferred maintenance list more quickly. Um, we're excited about this project and getting it done because, um, it will, uh, likely result in it, it's putting more efficient systems in place. So less downtime for both heating and cooling, but also hopefully some operating cost savings for our colleges. And then you see a really big number down there, seventy million dollars allocated for the, what we call the CTIP program. We'll talk more about that later. Um, but we have seventy million dollars earmarked and then an ending fund balance estimated at eighty four point two million. So a significant reduction, but remember we do have that, uh, sixty five million dollars every year coming into this fund. All right. So let's move on to the next slide and talk a little bit about the detailed capital expenditures by category. Um, this spending is primarily overseen by the district office's facilities, planning and development team. And you, we present this every year, so this probably looks very familiar to you. Um, there is funding available centrally for, um, emergency maintenance, roofing and paving, athletic facility maintenance. All of these funds are available, uh, each year. And so, um, the, uh, the big change you'll see there is that we have zeroed out the last line, the large remodels and teaching needs. Uh, the reason that we have zeroed this out, remember this is ongoing money that we have here. Now that we have the CTIP program in place, that's actually the right place to fund these large remodels. And that actually is where we were able to pull money out for the refresh program. Next slide, please. And then, um, this is just more detail. I will not go through every line of this by any stretch, but this is our five-year deferred maintenance program. Um, again, you've seen this before. There are, uh, there are adjustment factors, an inflation factor year over year. Um, but we do have, um, just under twenty eight million dollars in the budget this year for deferred maintenance. And we do intend to bring some additional detail on where we're at with our deferred maintenance program in the coming months. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so, um, when we presented, Kim and I presented in January, we talked about the Advisory Budget Council taking on three really big projects this year. Um, I'm really proud of the group. I think Kim as well, really proud of the work that they did. One was to balance the budget. Kim has presented to you a balanced general fund budget. The second was a new budget allocation model. We've presented on that as well, and we have integrated it into the general fund, uh, recommended budget. The last is the Capital and Technology Improvement Plan. So, um, a subgroup of ABC created this process where colleges and the district office could actually submit requests for both infrastructure and for IT needs. Um, the process was a little rushed this year, just because we were kind of building the plane as we flew it. Um, we, we received two hundred fifty million dollars in requests. So I was a little worried, kind of, we'd throw a party and no one would come. And, and they all got the invitation and they all showed up, which, which I think is great. Um, so for this list here, this, this list of, uh, capital or infrastructure requests, um, a sub-team of ABC actually, uh, evaluated all of the requests we received, used a rubric to score them. And then this list here is what was, um, recommended to be moved forward for funding consideration. Several of these are multi-year projects. We actually missed two Ys. The last two on this list are also multi-year projects. So the amount funded column you see there will be spread over multiple years for, uh, at least six of those projects. Um, a couple items of note here, there are two items, the advanced manufacturing and the West Valley Allied Health Expansion. Both of those have an asterisk by them. There's a future slide that tells you what that asterisk means, but I won't make you wait for that. Uh, we have not funded the entire project for these. They are really expensive projects, right? Sixty two million, twenty four million. Um, they are, uh, I think they are good ideas, um, conceptually, but the half million dollars gives the colleges some time to go out there and really make sure they've got their business plan in place. Talk to partners because I think these are opportunities for partnership discussions as well. And then we'll evaluate these um, as they roll forward. We also received, um, both, uh, Stray Mountain and Glendale submitted for West Valley Allied Health Expansion of twenty four million dollars each. And so that too, just to note that we have, um, two requests, um, for the same thing, and more discussion probably needs to occur about that, uh, for that. And then just I'll note the two at the bottom, the Vet Tech Clinic at Mesa and the District Office Building Replacement. Both of those projects were actually underway and funding had been identified before the CTIP process kicked off. So we've included them here, but they did work a little bit outside of the program. Right, next slide, please. And then this is even smaller. So these are the, um, the technology projects that were funded. Remember, we've taken all laptop and desktop refresh items off of this list because we've identified that ongoing funding source for this. Um, I won't go through the details on this, um, in part because I don't actually understand everything on the list. Someone in the room does, but it's not me. Um, the two things I will point out here similar to, so there, there are multi-year projects on this list indicated by a Y in the right column. And then the two items at the very bottom italicized, the Enterprise Data Center relocation, that would be dependent on a district office building move. So those two projects are tied. And then the Network Security and Architecture remediation is a project that, uh, Dr. Jess Evans and her team have been working on, and we'll be bringing more information forward to the board. Okay, next, uh, next slide, please. So I won't go through the first three bullet points because that actually, I, I mentioned those, um, in the slides as I was speaking. Um, but one thing to note is external funding sources are not reflected in the amounts we've shared tonight in the CTIP. So we've really given the gross amount, but there are some projects that we know have external funding sources. So Mesa has, um, at least one project that they know they have potential, um, external donors and, and so that will be integrated in as, uh, those discussions with the donors continue. And then we always would encourage, uh, other projects to, you know, seek external funding sources as well if they're available. So those amounts could change. Um, and these projects have not yet been fully vetted. They've been reviewed, uh, by teams to basically determine whether or not they are, they have a business case to move forward, but they haven't been reviewed by our facilities team. Um, there, we need to look at capacity of the system. We need to look at whether or not the dollar amounts are accurate. And one thing that was pointed out, which I think is very accurate, all of the estimates were created in December and January before any tariffs were in place. And so these are pre-tariff numbers. They could change dramatically, that which probably changed the list that we present to you. Um, so yes, more to come on that as we learn more. Next slide, please. And then our, our final steps on the CTIP, um, we will be looking again at an all-funds approach at these projects. So we will be talking, Kim, um, and Cody Johnson, our, our budget manager sitting in the back row. Um, we will be talking with colleges about fund balances that exist in capital funds and auxiliary funds. We'll be looking to use the most restricted funds first. So STEM is our most restricted fund. We'd look to use that wherever we could. Two oh seven, three oh one as well, restricted funds, using the general, the capital fund last because that's our least restricted source. So that, that's the approach that we'll take. But we will be speaking with colleges about any opportunities for sharing in the cost of these, these projects. Um, all right. And last slide. Next steps. April twenty seventh, it's twenty second, first read and, um, completion of the fiscal twenty six budget schedule and May twenty seventh, truth in taxation and budget adoption. That is our presentation. So we are happy to take questions.
So do you want us to keep singing under pressure?
If you could squeeze that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, so I'm going to again go through the board and see if there's any comments and I'll close that. I'll start at this end, Ms. Wong. Any comments or questions? Ms. Smith?
No, we met for an hour yesterday and I got my questions answered then. Thank you.
Good job, ladies. I, I really like what you have done here. So thank you.
No questions, just impressive. Thank you.
Dr. Thor. I know it's been mentioned, but I want to be sure the audience knows that the board had a briefing on this presentation in, in advance, and I'll ask a lot of questions at that time. Um, I do have two, one of which I've asked, but I'm going to ask again. And that is that, um, my recollection was that the, uh, Prop three oh one allocations to the Maricopa Corporate College and the PC Institute had a sunset. But they still keep appearing every year. Uh, when do they sunset? I warned you.
Secretary Sullivan, uh, Dr. Thor. Thank you for the question. And I'm afraid I don't have a better answer for you than when you asked me that the other day, as I haven't followed up on it. Um, and, and you're right, when they were initially, uh, placed on that schedule, there was intended to be a sunset. Um, I do know that I actually have notes about the PC Institute that somewhere along the lines, it was granted, uh, permanent funding from this source. Um, but I'm not sure where that came in. So what I would suggest is I think these questions need to come back up again and need to be revisited um, for both of those two entities. Um, and I think Leanne and I are committed to bringing those, uh, subjects up for a conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh.
Um, I'll probably ask again next year.
Yeah, hopefully you won't have to.
Um, my other question is on Proposition two oh seven. Under ongoing expenditures, uh, you have a category called operations. What is included in that? Oh, they're laughing again. And I didn't warn you about that one.
Secretary Sullivan and, uh, Dr. Thor. So I wish I had a good answer on that one, too. Um, I, I've asked the question, uh, because quite honestly, I don't think it's getting spent. Um, I think it was a placeholder category that we put in probably year two of two oh seven. Um, and then it never really got off the ground. So I believe that in the two oh seven space, and thank you also for bringing that slide back up because my pages are out of order now and I couldn't find it. Um, both operations and support for recently launched programs need a review. And so that is another one that we will hold in. I think both three oh one and two oh seven deserve another look. Um, and what we would also like to look at is how do those really interact with our other operating dollars? And maybe there's a way we look at true operating dollars across the system. Um, because I'm sure that you're aware that, uh, when two oh seven started and even three oh one, um, they are restricted. I'm not saying that they're not supposed to be restricted because there's specific purposes for them or limitations on how they can be used. But we've really looked at them as one-time money only. And there are only certain cases, uh, on three oh one, for instance, the thirty nine faculty that we've had those lines since two thousand when it was first passed. Um, and then we've also got, uh, the allocations to the colleges of the five million. Other than that, we look at everything as one-time money only. I think at this point, it probably is more wise for us to look at those as potential operating dollars. But we've not really broached that topic, for instance, with ABC. But we feel like after this year's work that was done, this is something that we think we're well poised to do likely for the twenty seven budget cycle.
Mm-hmm. That's good to hear because Prop, Proposition two oh seven funds.
Let's hope they keep going up, right?
Going higher, yes.
I didn't even catch that.
Well, it's just, I was parked outside a dispensary the other day. And there was just a constant stream of people going in, you know, and I've seen the dollars. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, those are my, uh, only questions, but I, uh, join with, uh, Ms. Davis in complimenting you on this new format. It's very helpful.
Ms. Butler?
Thank you. I have no additional questions, but I thank you again for the presentation and, uh, your explanation, which was somewhat entertaining even. Thank you.
Uh, so my turn. I also wanted to thank you for the hard work you and your teams have, uh, contributed to making this budget presentation. Each year that I've been on the board, it's been a new, um, it's better and better. And so want to again compliment you. And I do remember one of the first presentations I heard where Ms. Grineau mentioned such a thing as a balanced budget. And there was kind of this uh, glaze over so many people's eyes. So here we are, seven years later, and, uh, that's quite an accomplishment, uh, to have been able to maneuver and work with so many people to achieve that in this budget. Uh, so please pass our appreciation and thanks to your teams as well in that effort to, to get this done. Um, I wanted to also, it was actually in my notes, Dr. Thor, to make a comment that one of the reasons we probably are not throwing as many questions at you as we might otherwise is because of, they took the time to talk with each of us as board members to ensure that we would appreciate and understand the new format and have an opportunity to have reviewed numbers. So we could be articulate or whatever in, in this, uh, space with you. So just for the record, want people to be aware that, that we're not ignoring the complexities of this, nor bypassing inquiry. We, we've had opportunities. Um, I did have a couple of questions. If, one, you've done this presentation in other places. What has been the overall reception that you've received as you've done this in this more current month?
Thank you, Secretary Sullivan. So we've done the, the January fourteenth presentation. We did it at all of our colleges, the district office. So I think we could probably recite that now without notes. Pretty impressive. Um, they were really wonderful conversations and they were tough conversations. And we've received some tough questions from some of our colleges, especially those that are taking reductions for next year. But I just have to, um, commend the, the team of presidents that we have. I think just did a, an outstanding job, um, communicating, working with their faculty and staff um, through any reductions they might need to take. And they, they were, they were really wonderful conversations and I appreciate the opportunity. I think Kim did as well.
And you presented the capital improvement plan. What type of reaction did you get to this new, uh, presentation model and the emphasis on technology and other things that you have talked about this evening?
So they, they have not seen, um, we wanted to give the board the first view of what actually has been recommended for funding. So that this will be everyone else's first review of it as well. But the Advisory Budget Council made those, uh, did that review and the recommendation. And the, the colleges receiving funds through that process were notified earlier this week, I think. And, um, we've received a, a lot of thanks. So um, no, nothing bad at this point. Um, but the process will still, I mean, there, this process is new and there's a lot for us to learn from it. So it will probably be a little bit bumpy for the next year. Um, but we'll smooth out those bumps. And I think I, I look forward to getting a point where we're really investing heavily in those campuses. So.
So, so the message there is for everyone to be open-minded and being able to share, uh, their sense of that and also appreciate and understand the model that you're proposing, which, uh, when we had our conversation, I, I felt was certainly a, a good way to move towards one of the trends, the goals and priorities of the chancellor that's tied to the technology element. So thank you for giving that attention. Um, and my last question is about carryovers. There, there are a lot of carryovers sitting in this budget. Do you have any comments, general statements? Anything you'd like to say about carryovers? Or not?
Yeah, uh, Secretary Sullivan. So Leanne liked me and said, that's your question. So. Here we go. So I'm gonna think that you're probably talking about fund balance as well as probably carryforward.
You're much better said than.
I just always have to make sure I'm on the right page because sometimes I'm not. So I think fund balances are good, especially for a system our size. They can also be too much. And eyes are on us all the time when we are, when Lauren is pounding the pavement at the Capitol to get dollars, operating dollars from the state. And they read our financial statements and they see what our balances are, which they know how to do. It creates, I think, a little bit of a challenge for us to advocate for additional dollars when we have fund balance. The other part of it is that there wasn't any college, I think, that we went to in February that said, when are you going to fix my building that's falling down around me? And we've had dollars in place for the deferred maintenance program for quite some time. Clearly, everybody can see that there are balances available for us to take care of our own stuff. And it is really time for us to do that. The other thing is that I think over time, there has been uncertainty about where capital dollars would come from. I mean, anybody who's been here for any amount of time knows that we've done bond program after bond program after bond program, so 84, 94, 2004. Set your calendar to Maricopa bond programs, right? And so the question keeps, and it still comes up today, when are we going to do another bond issue? And I have to say, it's difficult when you're looking at the balances that we just presented to advocate for another bond program. So we really need to get those balances under control, and I mean that in the best possible way. We need to be spending responsibly and we need to be investing in ourselves. And I think that has largely been stymied over the last handful of years. And even longer than that, trying to figure out how to get, how to move from a, you know, $951 million bond program to really no capital program. I still think that it was a brilliant idea to do the tax shift that we've been doing for a handful of years now. And you all will probably remember that that was about, if not really not having to do a bond program in the future, it was to delay that as long as possible. And so I think the combination of CTIP that will allow us to do some investing in ourselves, whether it's technology or capital, and we'll be both. And then also looking at that ongoing revenue stream we now have built in the capital program, we're at a good place now to be having real good conversations about highest and best use of dollars, all of those kinds of things. So I think that, you know, it's, again, it's not the worst thing ever that we have balances. And for that, I'll think about what happened with the Kozmier judgment. It was $46 million that we did not anticipate being short in our revenues in the general fund. So the fact that we had fund balance allowed us to not take any dollars from anyone else. It all came from fund balance. And so I think it's just an example of why having fund balance is good. We just as a system need to get our arms around what's an appropriate level of fund balance, just like the contingency conversation. And I think that is also an activity that ABC will undertake in the coming months as well, so.
Thank you for taking that. And that brought me to one of my last comments, and that was the role of ABC in working together in a collaborative conversation and consensus to move these budget issues forward. And want to thank the folks on ABC and also appreciate that that was started in order to help us move these agendas forward. So thank you for that. Before you go away, Dr. Gonzalez, do you have any comments or, oh, Ms. Wong, did you have a question? I apologize.
Yeah, I came up after I heard you guys talking. I know it's kind of uncertain when it comes to addressing this, but you did mention tariffs. And if they are implemented, is there any sort of research as being done in order to prepare? And how does it, what would it look like if there were any tariffs implemented throughout, in general, the whole environment of higher education? Or is anything being, you know, done to prepare for these actions being made? And how it affect or if there's any priorities that will lie if we have to do something in a short-term notice?
Thank you for that question. And that's, you know, I think you've summarized a lot of the current frustration and anxiety that we have in a whole bunch of different areas that we don't know what's coming next. We don't know what's coming next with tariffs. We don't know what's coming next with the economy. So we say it, we put the caution out there that the price tag on these could go up substantially. You could end up with supply chain issues and delays, especially in things that you use to build buildings. So I know that's not a good answer, but we just know enough to be cautious right now and to know that the numbers will likely change. So I wish we had a date certain that we would know about all the tariffs and I don't feel that we're going to get that date certain from any source. So we're gonna just keep our eye on it and adjust as we need to.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Secretary Sullivan, and members of the board. I too want to thank Leanne and Kim and the team, ABC and many others that were involved in the shared governance process to arrive at this juncture in our budgeting process. Commending the team as well for reaching a balanced budget much quicker than we had planned. It was a sort of a ripping of a Band-Aid to get there. I still think it begs the question, however, and there will be an appropriate time for us to discuss this with our board and other members of the shared governance groups of asking ourselves a question, are we appropriately funded as an institution? And that's a tough question to ask when you just asked also about fund balances. But it is wise for an institution to have appropriate levels of fund balance. I think you said 60 days is what we could live on, given our balances that we have. If for some reason we lost funding of sorts, right? So I look forward to those continued conversations. As I've done my listening sessions around the system there, especially since the rollout of the new budget allocation model, there have been a lot of questions about can we get to something sooner than where we are today? And I'm pretty candid to say, short of winning the lottery in Maricopa, the only way that we're going to be able to infuse funds drastically would be sharp increases in enrollment, which would generate tuition. Or perhaps that coupled with tuition increase, perhaps coupled with, and I hate to say this out loud, because I know that we're not, I'm not suggesting that this will happen, but a tax increase is also another way that infuses funds quite drastically into the system. Those are all things that I think need to be asked in the near future. In the absence of state funding over the last several years, there are multi-millions of dollars that Maricopa has been without. And when we talk about efficiency, I think we've proven that we're a very efficient organization and we continue to work on being more efficient. But we should also be appropriately funded as the large organization that we are. That concludes my comments. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. So with that, we know there's a lot going forward and but what's in front of us immediately is to be prepared to support and approve a budget in May. So thank you for the hard work that helps us understand and appreciate what that will look like. So no one is blindsided certainly in that situation. So we look forward to the first read in a month. And then the truth and taxation, public hearing and budget adoption at the end of May. Thank you again to you and to your teams for the hard work that has put this on the table. So thank you. And with that, I'm going to excuse you from the podium, not in song, but just in our appreciation. So thank you for that. Folks, I'm going to thank you for your time tonight. I'm going to state that our study session is now concluded at 6:15 PM. Our governing board meeting will commence at 6:30 PM, so that gives you 14 minutes and 30 seconds to circulate and take a small break. And we'll be back together at 6:30 PM. Thank you. For those, it never ended up out of my hand into the audience though, which was really a good thing because that can happen with, when you're holding a gavel. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome everyone here and also would like to announce again that we are live captioning our meetings. So please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you will find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with the live captioning. Also, you can tell that Ms. Bittersmith is not here this evening, our board chair. But as board president, Ms. Bittersmith is being honored this evening at an awards banquet where she's being recognized as one of 25 outstanding women in business for 2025 by the Phoenix Business Journal. So on behalf of the governing board, I would like to read a statement that we achieved in consensus to comment on our current environment. So with that, allow me to read this to you as Maricopans. Dear Maricopans, from its inception, you know, this is really emotional. The community college movement has been committed to expanding access and increasing opportunity for all who would benefit from the education we provide. That commitment is our bedrock principle and we strive to achieve it every day. Although that commitment has not changed, we are now required to operate under new federal constraints. The chancellor's recent decisions were made to protect our students and ensure that our community remains eligible to receive critical federal funding and resources such as student financial aid. Our compliance allows us to again focus on our broader mission and commitment to our students, our faculty, our staff and our community. We recognize and respect that these new constraints deeply affect us. We acknowledge and we share the disappointment that these changes bring. As we move forward together, we will seek new effective ways to engage all of our students and support their needs. Thank you. So with that, I'm going to call to order and roll call the governing board. And with, we're convening at 6:35 PM. For the record, roll call of board members, I'll start with you, Ms. Jackson Long.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Butler.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Thank you, Jaclyn Smith.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
And with my presence, there are six governing board members present with our student trustee. Now, I'd like to welcome the Gateway Community College Student Leaders Group to the podium. And as you line up, we'll ask for one of you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And with that, as our audience, may we all stand, please, as we welcome them to the podium to cite the Pledge of Allegiance. Isn't it wonderful to have students? Yeah. Yeah. So with that, please.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, through God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and law.
So thank you, don't go away, students. I have a couple announcements and then we'll move into your presentation. So we have Ms. Patel of Workforce and Industry Development Officer Senior, representing Mr. Brian Spicker, our president and CEO of Maricopa Foundation with us this evening. And we have Dr. Stephanie Poliar, Vice President of Academic Affairs, sitting in for Dr. Lyschinsky, President of Scottsdale Community College, who's, I believe, at the awards banquet for Ms. Bitter Smith. So thank you for listening to those announcements. And students, the podium is all yours. We're eager to hear from you.
Hello? Good evening, Secretary Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Dr. Gonzalez and members of the Shared Governance Executive Council and guests. My name is Ruth Maigoytia. We are here to represent Gateway Student Body and as members of Student Leadership Council, we would like to formally introduce ourselves. Starting off, my name is Ruth Maigoytia. I am Gateway Student Leadership Council Chair and I am majoring in radiology.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julisa Valladolid Ortiz and I am the Student Council Vice Chair. I'm also currently pursuing a degree in biological sciences.
Hello, my name is Anaya Jones. I am the Student Leadership Council Secretary and I am pursuing a degree in finance. Starting off.
Hello, my name is Gael Tevez and I am studying computer science.
My name is Maria Minjavatiam, studying nursing at Gateway.
Our traditions in building legacy at Gateway. Despite a challenging year, we remain committed to honoring the legacy of Ms. Maria Jessie Palacio and Ms. Ella Washington, who's dedication shaped our student center life. To celebrate Ms. Jessie Palacio's four decades at Gateway, we hosted the Day of Jessie. It's a tribute to journey, empowerment, self, and, sorry, service and self-care for everyone. Where her plaque was placed on the tree of remembrance, honoring those who have worked at Gateway. We celebrated Ms. Ella Washington with a book drive and a memorial fund, ensuring her 26 years of service and commitment to inclusivity continue to be part of our student life center for years to come. With that said, under Dr. Ebony Anderson's leadership, we are revamping our Center for Student Life and hiring key staff collaborating with faculty to build a strong, dedicated team. Together, we honor the past, strengthen the present and shape the future.
We have goals. Our student leadership team connects students with our schools, resources, enhancing their experiences. The Unonly Project included a portion of our Wellness Leadership Retreat and a color and connection analysis, helping us understand colors, how colors reflect our emotions and strengthen community ties. We plan to incorporate this project into our monthly agenda where we will facilitate sessions with faculty, staff and students. We are receiving training from our recruitment department to improve student retention and engage potential Gateway students through campus tours. We are proud to partner with St. Mary's Food Bank Mobile Drive, an initiative that supports our community. Every two weeks on Tuesdays, we collect and distribute essential food items and to those in need, aiming to make a positive impact. We offer a food pantry and clothing boutique for our students, ensuring they have access to great accessories. Regularly stock and community by community donations, our resources, sorry, our resources include clothing for various occasions to help our students succeed.
Based on the feedback we received from Gateway students, one of the things our school does best is prioritizing our peers' mental health. Our college supports students' mental health with initiatives like a Serenity Room and Therapy Dogs, namely Dash and Presley. Gateway also focuses on providing resources for student success, including career services, a tutoring center and counseling. Our engaged professors also offer one-on-one support, fostering a nurturing environment for students to thrive. We have also asked and we listen. Our peers have let us know that while we as a campus provide great resources available to them, some areas that we could improve upon are our food resources by increasing access to more diverse food items that we are, as we currently have a small pantry. We can also host fun activities such as games to help students distress and take a break from school life. This gives students an This gives students an opportunity to socialize in an informal setting.
So our ask of you all, to ensure every student has the guidance and support they need to thrive, we are asking for two key enhancements. Our first ask would be more academic advisors, and our second would be more embedded tutors. Anaya will expand on our first ask.
Thank you, Julissa. At Gateway, the lack of academic advisors is a growing challenge, with the ratio being one advisor to every three hundred students. This makes it difficult for students to get timely guidance, especially during open enrollment, where appointments are limited. As a result, many miss the opportunity to secure the classes they need, creating obstacles in their academic journeys. As enrollment continues to grow, so does the need for academic advisors. Including, increasing advisors availability is crucial to ensure students receive the support they need to stay on track. To serve our expanding population, we need to invest in more advisors who can provide guidance and resources for students.
Expanding on our second ask regarding embedded tutors, it is important to recognize difficult courses for students across the district that have a standard practice for embedded tutoring. One of our student leaders brought to our attention that we are in need in more, that we are in need of more embedded tutors. Our peer Imani is taking classes at Gateway and one of our sister community colleges, Mesa Community College, and noticed that Mesa Community College had offered embedded tutors that Gateway did not in her biology classes. She mentioned the advantages that came from these embedded tutors, such as the immediate access to help, the increased understanding of material, especially in a content-heavy and fast-paced course like Bio Two Oh One. The assistance tailored to specific needs, along with clear scheduling and availability that helps students plan ahead to ensure they get the help they need. Although we are one Maricopa district, our services are not the same. We would like to have the same or similar support services throughout. And I believe students at Gateway would highly benefit from additional help like this. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time, and if you have any further questions, please do not hesitate to ask. We will try our best to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, don't go away. First of all, I know all of us will probably want to individually thank you for these bags.
Of course.
There are surprises on them. And the other thing, Dr. Norene, I notice you're not wearing a Gateway shirt today. Uh-oh. Would you, someone, ensure that he receives a Gateway Gecko shirt?
We will make sure.
Okay, thank you. Still, don't go away. Thank you very much for your presentation and the things that you're doing, and also the fact that you have an ask is something for us always to consider as we work with your administration, et cetera. So, board members, any comments, questions to these fine people?
I have.
Yeah.
It's a large. No, I just wanted to thank and appreciate you coming to us with the asks. I mean, having a student's perspective, I mean, it does a great job of bringing the student's perspective, but having it come from you really kind of drives home the needs that students are faced with. And so having you come to us with these asks and things are really important. I'm not sure you're here for the budget session.
No, they weren't here.
They weren't here, okay. I can't believe I'm going to ask this question.
Oh, gosh.
So embedded tutors are really, no, are really important, and the advantages are really great. I know that some courses actually charge a course fee, an additional course fee, to make sure that we can afford to have those embedded tutors. Right? And so I'm just asking you, would students be willing to pay a course fee, an additional course fee, to make sure we have the embedded tutors and the support that you need to be successful?
I think it depends on the student's financial background and if they would be able to afford that.
Thank you, thank you.
You came this close. Yes, Ms. Davis.
Secretary Sullivan, I have two things I wanted to mention. Number one, I think I got to meet Dash. He was lovely. And my second comment is, I love the name Unlonely Project. I really like that. I think so. Good job.
Thank you. Any other comments? Anyone? Well, thank you very much for joining us this evening, and we appreciated you leading the pledge and your comments and your asks. So thank you, and you're welcome to stay for the entire meeting as we move forward. So thank you.
Thank you for having us.
My pleasure. I'd now like to move us to the Faculty Executive Council Report, titled Remember the Mission, presented by Dr. Ramona Goth.
Madam Secretary, members of the board, chancellor, C E C, colleagues, honored students, and guests. As the daughter of a career marine, my formative years were punctuated with phrases like, "Failure is not an option," "Adapt and overcome," and most importantly, "Remember your mission." Admonishments I've had many occasions to remember this year. Through what has been and continues to be challenging times, faculty have taken calming breaths, squared their shoulders, and continued the good work. Faculty worked to design and refine courses to keep programs relevant and aligned with industry needs. Faculty collaborated with industries, organizations, and local communities to build mutually beneficial partnerships. Faculty strove to guide students academically, professionally, fostering career growth and lifelong learning. This year, faculty have participated in the design and development of three new bachelor's degrees in artificial intelligence, business management, and accounting. All three programs will welcome new students this fall. That brings the number of bachelor's programs from Maricopa to eleven, and over five thousand Maricopa students have identified one of the bachelor's degrees in Maricopa as their program of choice with intent to complete. To date, we have seventeen students complete a bachelor's degree in Maricopa. Faculty have worked to complete an Arizona general education curriculum redesign. The board heard in the last meeting from Doctors Marcio and Warner about this issue. Students in Fall 2026 will have a simplified route to complete their transfer program and be able to transfer far more credits to the three state universities than in previous years. Faculty have worked to design micro-credentials to provide flexible, targeted, and cost-effective learning opportunities that help individuals stay competitive in today's fast-changing job market. Behavioral health, faculty designed over thirty new B H S industry-recognized micro-credentials, and well over three hundred credentials have already been awarded to students in a variety of B H S courses this academic year. Additionally, faculty in data analytics, I T foundations, I T help desk, and precision optics have also developed and rolled out micro-credentials within their courses and programs. While faculty have worked on important district-wide academic initiatives, the real magic helped in individual classrooms where, despite what was happening around, faculty validated and supported all students. Faculty, like a South Mountain Community College mathematics teacher, whose student wrote, "I have learned so much in your class, not just about the subject matter, but also about the importance of hard work, perseverance, and curiosity. Your encouragement has made a significant difference in my education and personal growth. Thank you for being patient, understanding, and always willing to help." Or EMCC geology and sustainability professor Zachary Kovach, whose student wrote, "When I asked for a letter of recommendation for a big internship opportunity, Professor Kovach gladly agreed. When I asked him to come support me during a major final presentation for said internship, he came, and seeing him sitting in the audience showed me he genuinely cared about what I was doing. Without his help, I wouldn't have gotten the opportunities I got or have been so inspired to grow as both a student and a person." Or Scottsdale Community College Hospitality Professor Janelle Hoffman, whose student wrote, "I recently saw you on LinkedIn and wanted to reach out to thank you for being an instrumental part of my educational journey. When I started our first class together in 2020, I was a high school dropout with a G E D, unsure of how to format a paper. However, I've since graduated from N A U with a bachelor's degree in hospitality management. I kept all the important textbooks you remembered, envisioning them in my future office, where I can reflect on our lectures whenever I face difficult decisions. Research shows that college graduates have greater earning potential than high school graduates. Better employability, increased productivity, enhanced communication skills, improved self-confidence, advanced critical thinking skills, broader networks and advancement opportunities, and healthier, happier lives. Education matters. What we do matters. So faculty will continue to remind ourselves that failure is not an option. We will endeavor to adapt and overcome, and we will continue to focus on our mission to ignite talent, transform lives, and enrich communities through teaching, learning, and service." Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Goth. Board members, any comments or questions?
No.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the adjunct faculty presentation, Ms. Both.
Good evening, Secretary Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of S G E C, and guests. I'm going to go a little off my original writing that I had sent, because we write it a week and a half ahead of time sometimes, and I want to stay a little more current. I will give some background, though. At our recent A F G board meeting, we did have, I will follow this, we had Patricia Guin join us to help give the board an understanding of what's expected in our upcoming Outstanding Adjunct Awards. We are having our awards here on the eighteenth of April, and some of you will be in attendance for that. We thank you for that. Currently, the voting has closed, and we're tabulating to get to our final members that we'll be honoring. Patricia, in addition to helping us with the Outstanding Adjunct Conversation, also answered some questions on tiers and the A F P G, which is the Adjunct Faculty Professional Growth Programs. One thing that has come up in the last year is that our opportunities and our engagement with adjuncts for professional growth, both in the adjunct faculty professional growth, where they can go to conferences, as well as the internal, where we can earn towards our tiers and our compensation, the interest has grown greatly, to the point where we have so many proposals coming in that we're packed every week trying to go through them. I sit on a committee that once a week reviews and affirms the, whether they have all the data that they need to be able to get this proposal confirmed. And now I'm taking on the role also of reaching out when we get questions coming in to make sure that the people at M C L I don't have to be the ones that are constantly answering emails with questions about, "I haven't heard back yet. Will I hear back?" or "What do I do?" or "How do I start on this?" So it's been really interesting and vibrant to see how many people are engaged in this. And with our rate going up from seven fifty to a thousand starting in July, we assume that we're going to have many more people partaking in this as well, because now we'll have a budget where they can attend conferences and have a little more covered for things. So we've been really excited about how people are responding to that and the fact that they want to engage in this. I've also been working with the Adjunct Faculty Handbook Collaboration Team. We just worked on our charter for the team, and we're also identifying and updating the additions to our handbook. We've got a couple of different issues that we want to discuss that are, not just updates, but how can we better address things so that people find it a more useful document? I also continue with all of my regular committee meetings. I sit on many committees. That's one of the fun parts of my job. And I mean that wholeheartedly. I've learned so much over the last couple of years in how the district manages things and works, and how our voices can actually be heard. We are also realizing, as the A F G, that our opportunities to affect connection and opportunity in how we connect with more people than just the adjunct faculty. And we've had some faculty members that are getting more connections on their campus, either being asked to sit on the Senate meetings as a guest or in other involvements. And we're realizing that although in the past there may have been siloed faculty, staff, adjunct situations, that more connection benefits us all, benefits our students, and benefits the opportunities that we can create for everybody. And we're looking to expand on that. We realize that, hey, we can do the old, hey, let's put on a show, let's reach out to people and make this happen. So it's been pretty exciting. Our new group of adjunct reps that we have lately are very engaged and very excited to have conversation. In our bylaws meeting today, even with that, it was vibrant in terms of, should we be including this? How can we make this more understandable for people? What else can we include? Oh, we need to update this. And I'm not chairing the committee. One of my other reps is, and she's doing a fabulous job with it. And so I'm really pleased to see the other members of our adjunct faculty board stepping up into different positions. In fact, I would like to highlight the work of one of my reps at Paradise Valley Community College, Leech Hivers. She has coordinated several recent community building events for adjunct faculty. She worked with the PDCC faculty rock band, so that one of their performances could be an adjunct meetup with a special admission prize to encourage adjunct attendance. And she's also organized adjuncts to work with weekly food distribution services. Last week, she had an event, it was written before then, but she had an event planned for the twenty-first featuring adjunct faculty resources, where they have several different booths where they could go to and help the adjuncts realize that here's where you can get support services on different things. So she's been just great. All of my reps are, but every once in a while, one of them will say, "Here's what I've been working on that's different." And in fact, today in our bylaws meeting, she said that she was the one that received the invitation from faculty representatives to say, "Would you come and sit in on the Senate meeting?" So she felt like that's, on her campus at least, showing that, yes, they want to be an integral part of things. And so she feels very supported and very excited to have new opportunities with things. So again, it's just an update today, nothing crazy involved, but I'm always happy to share the news of what we've been working on. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have them. Otherwise, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Moving on now to our staff representation update. Hello. Wow, there's a lot of you. Good. Glad to see you.
Well, good evening, Secretary, Ms. Sullivan, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, S G E C members and guests. Next slide, please. So staff representation is starting in the new election cycle. Campaigning started March seventeenth. Self-nominations will go March twenty-fifth through April twenty-first. Town halls will be taking place April first, ten to eleven A M. Wednesday, April ninth, from three to four. This is very informative for especially those new staff members or people that want to get to know what is staff representation, shared governance, and that sort of thing. Election period will take place from May fifth through May ninth, and the new reps will be announced May twelfth. New term starts on July first this year. Next slide, please. And we just wanted to feature really quick the League of Excellence Awards. Many members of Maricopa community colleges throughout Maricopa received this award. So I just want, I'm not going to read all the names, but you can see there's a lot of people participating and receive those awards. And real quick, I want, I wanted to, this is not in the part of the presentation, but I am honored to take a moment to recognize and celebrate someone whose leadership has truly made a difference. Dr. Georgetta Kelly. Dr. Kelly, your unwavering commitment to staff representation, your bold advocacy, and your deep compassion have made a difference in ways that words can hardly express. Your leadership has been both courageous and compassionate, and it's impossible to overstate the impact you've had on this institution and people within it. You've helped shape a culture where staff have a voice and where representation truly means something. You reminded us that every voice matters, especially the voices that often go unheard. Your leadership has created space for others to lead, to grow, and to be seen. You've left footprints that we will follow for years to come. As you retire and begin a new chapter, we wish you nothing but joy, rest, and fulfillment. You've earned every moment. You leave behind not only policies and progress, but a legacy of heart and humanity. Thank you, Dr. Kelly, for everything you will be dearly missed in a On behalf of staff representation, we would like to present you.
Extremely well said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to present now the members from staff representation of Gateway Community College.
Good evening. Next slide, please. My name is Amy Blackman, and I'm the senator for Gateway Community College. Our goal is to ensure that Gateway is a great place to work.
My name is Deborah Phillips. I am the exempt rep for all of our staff. Sorry. Next slide, please. So today, we'd like to share some things that we've been doing at Gateway as staff rep. We do have bi-weekly meetings with President Amy Diaz. We have bi-weekly brown bag chat sessions to keep our classified staff community connected and informed. And we hold two seats on the president's cabinet to give feedback and stay involved.
Hello, I'm Erin Donnelly. I'm a Gateway non-exempt. We offer in-person campus popcorn and chat sessions at various Gateway Community College locations. We have an email for classified staff to reach out when in need. It's e c r at gateway cc.edu. And we are involved in multiple campus events, committees, meetings, and hiring teams.
Hello, my name is Kelly Little. I'm an exempt staff rep member. As our wonderful students showcased earlier, we also help with the St. Mary's Food Bank. Gateway is a great place to work as we take turns volunteering and helping out, bringing food and substance to our community and working together. Oh, next slide, if there are any questions for us.
Let's find out. Any questions, anyone? Not, there are none, there aren't any, but we appreciate your presentation this evening, and thank you for your contribution to your campus. Thank you. So what we have next on the agenda is actually zeroed out for this evening, but it is tied to awards and recognitions. Want to acknowledge that this is usually space where we have acknowledged emeritus recipients. But as we've stated off and on, there was a new process that was established and now is being implemented to ensure that we can celebrate all of our emeritus recipients and acknowledge their contributions to our district. So though we will not isolate that this evening under this awards and recognition sector, want to note that on our consent agenda, we will be seeking approval of our most recent faculty emeritus distinction for Ms. Susan Mills, who is tied to our arts program. And though, again, we're not providing that award this evening, just wanted to acknowledge that we're shifting gears. It's always something new, and there will be, in, I believe, the fall, some recognition that embraces our emeritus recipients and acknowledges their contributions. So I just wanted to call that out because Ms. Mills is in the audience. Without actually having an agenda item for that. So that was my prerogative as acting, or whatever I am, secretary of the board this evening. So congratulations, Ms. Mills. You're welcome. With that, I'm going to move us then to what is on the agenda, and that is the chancellor's report. So Dr. Gonzalez, we're ready.
Thank you, Secretary Sullivan, and congratulations to Professor Mills. She's a wonderful artist, by the way. If you ever get an opportunity to see her drawings, paintings, and other work, amazing work. So thank you, Susan, for being here tonight. We look forward to celebrating you officially down the road. With that, I'm going to carry on and continue to give you some additional data about Gateway, since we have their students here today. The Gateway Clock Hour program enrollment has reached eight hundred and twenty-two. Unduplicated head counts surpassing last year's total with three months remaining. And spring 2025 head count is at four thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine, which reflects a nine point five percent increase from the same time last year. So good job to Gateway's Clock Hour and Credit Hour programs. Some points of pride, you know, the first R N to B S N cohort began in the fall of 2024, and the program has seen great success. To date, ninety-six students have enrolled with twenty-five more set to start in summer of 2025. That's amazing that our students have the ability to go on and earn a bachelor's degree in nursing here in Maricopa District. So good job to the team there. In alignment with pathway opportunities for students, a new partnership with the American College of Education allows Gateway students to transfer up to nine credits into ACE's M S N program, potentially reducing M S N completion by six to twelve months. That's a master's in nursing, I'm assuming. So that's a master. So now you can continue on with a master's. Gateway has been, excuse me, Gateway has been named honorable mention for the most promising places to work in community colleges, sponsored by NiSOD and diverse issues in community colleges. The new Century Workforce Pathway Scholarship, sponsored by Coca-Cola Foundation and supported by BiTheater Kappa, received nearly twenty-one hundred applications. Applicants were evaluated on academic achievement, leadership service, and significant contributions. The Gateway student earned the highest score in Arizona and will receive a fifteen hundred dollar scholarship. The student will be recognized at the 2025 A C C T Leadership Congress in New Orleans, Louisiana, from October 22nd through the 25th, will be in attendance to that. Perhaps there'll be an opportunity for some of us, board members and myself, to meet that student. Gateway in South Mountain received a million-dollar grant from the Diane and Bruce Halli Foundation to enhance industrial trades training. Gateway will receive three hundred and twenty-eight thousand to offer scholarships and integrate V R technology into training for advanced manufacturing. So that's it for Gateway. So good job, Gateway. I know somebody used to be a president there. Enrollment updates for the system, spring 2025 head count is currently at eighty-nine thousand three hundred and forty-three students, which is up three point two percent from spring 2024. FTSE is at twenty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-two, which is up four point one percent. So we continue the nice, steady climb out of the, excuse me, the COVID. I guess this is our COVID rebound, and some of our colleges are beginning to surpass some of those numbers. Legislative update, we had Senator Karen Werner, who toured Scottsdale Community College and plans to see more skilled trade programs in the future. As state budget negotiations begin, the government relations team is meeting with many members of the legislature to prioritize funding adult education. And, you know, and similar to the staff that was up earlier recognizing Dr. Kelly, I plan to do the same. However, Dr. Kelly, I don't have flowers to give you, so I don't know if you want to hear what I've got to say now, but I'm going to go ahead and move forward here and say that she has announced her retirement, and it's effective April 4th. She has dedicated nearly six years to Maricopa and has had a career spanning more than twenty years in human resources leadership. Her leadership has played a key role in shaping our system's culture and strengthening our position as an employer of choice. Her impact in Maricopa has been significant. She's led, excuse me, my phone was ringing. She has led a comprehensive restructuring of H R division, ensuring long-term stability and growth, provided steady leadership through the challenges of the pandemic, keeping H R operations evolving to better serve our employees. She's developed Maricopa's first multi-year compensation and benefit strategy, modernizing our approach to employee support. She launched the People Matter People First campaign, reinforcing H R's commitment to employee engagement and workforce culture. She optimized resource utilization through strategic automation, improving efficiency and service delivery. While we celebrate Dr. Kelly's many contributions, our work continues to ensure that Maricopa remains a leader in workforce excellence and employee engagement. And as we move forward, we will build on this legacy, strengthen our organizational culture, remain focused on supporting our employees, who are the foundation of our success. We will conduct a thoughtful and strategic transition process to ensure continued momentum in our human resources initiatives. So on behalf of Maricopa Community Colleges, I extend our deepest gratitude to Dr. Kelly for her service, leadership, and dedication. We wish her all of the best in her next chapter and know that her impact will continue to be felt across our system. And as I did earlier this morning in this room with our S G E C meeting, I personally thank Dr. Kelly for her help as I transitioned into the interim chancellor's role and then into the chancellor's position. She was one, a few from the very beginning, that I could really rely on to be someone that I could learn from, lean against, and be supported in whatever success I experienced. So I attribute that to her and other leaders that were in our system at that time. So thank you, Dr. Kelly. Secretary Sullivan, that concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. So, and we'll miss you, Dr. Kelly. Thank you for all your service. I'm now going to move us into another section of the meeting, and that is our citizens interim. In this category, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with the open meeting law, the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. And when necessary, issues can be taken under advisement and placed on a subsequent agenda. There are also some constraints to the presentation, and that is you have the opportunity, as presenters, to speak up to five minutes maximum on the topic for which you have indicated you would like to address. So this evening, I have three requests for speaking to topics. And I would like to start the president, this evening's section, with Ms. Christina Tyler. So Ms. Tyler, please come to the podium, and we are glad you're with us this evening. And we'll acknowledge that you have up to five minutes to speak with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the first thing that I would like to address is that I noticed at your board meetings is that there's no reasonable accommodation forms. And as an individual with half my brain herniated and my spinal chirry malformation, their chairs are very uncomfortable for the disabilities that I have. I have several cysts on my sacrum nerve, and I've been qualified for neurosurgery from Dr. Rudolph Schrott in California for Tarlov cyst disease. And he even said I would need more than one surgery. And so I believe that you guys should have reasonable accommodation forms presented at your board meetings. So that way, with accommodations that could be accommodated at the meeting itself, it, you know, if it doesn't really require having to pay somebody or some sort of technology in advance, generally speaking, you know, sitting and standing is pretty reasonable for a disability that I have. And so I understand that after I speak, I'm going to have to step out of the room so I can stand, because that was actually putting a lot of pressure on my back and causing a lot of pain for me. But the reason why I'm here is because your financial aid department over at that building there, Rio Salado. The thing is, is as an individual with disabilities, I'm supposed to be able to utilize vocational rehabilitation to be able to cover my education. Well, what's been happening is with bulk rehab, I've been in a limbo because even though approved for vocational rehabilitation, the thing is, is that I'm trying to be the first person in the United States to utilize vocational rehabilitation to start a five-on-one C three. And so the thing is, is it's right now, it's policy due to federal law, so I can't go to the next step in the process, which I have tried to get Rio Salado to basically help intervene and make it to where they could help me academically in that, in that next step when it comes to bulk rehab. Because the long story is short, they just kind of do whatever they want regardless of federal laws. Like, they won't send declination letters when you're even going through the process of trying to get on bulk rehab. And so, yeah, that's why Arizona Center of Disability Law is also intervening against them. And so also, your financial aid department is not aiding and assisting people with root to relief and to be able to use those funds. They specifically said the only thing that they help with is just people who are trying to utilize Fast Phone, that's it. They can't even guide me or tell me anybody when it comes to aiding and assistance with root to relief or when it comes to being able to have help with vocational rehabilitation. And as a thirty-three-year-old woman, when I initially went to college, I know I don't qualify for Fast Phone because I already have a bachelor's degree. At that time, I didn't picture myself ending up with a connective tissue disorder and eventually research shows that I have a very high-functioning form of autism, which didn't, there wasn't research for autistic females until I was an adult.
One minute.
But basically, the thing is, is that I keep running into barriers of barriers when it comes to employment, when it comes to my medical, when it comes to academically. And the thing is, is that unfortunately, I even have to go to board meetings to try to fight and get what I should be legally allowed to have when it comes to, when it comes to federal statutes. So I'd like somebody, I don't care who it is, somebody needs to be trained to be able to help assist people with root to relief, as well as utilizing bulk rehab for their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler. I have then two requests from one speaker, but we'll divide them into each section. So Mr. Terry, would you join us at the podium, please? And we discussed that you would present on your first item. And again, you have up to five minutes to speak to this issue.
Thank you, Secretary Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, and members of the Shared Governance Council and guests. My name is Justin Terry. I'm a staff member at G C C, a former student, a lifelong Arizonan and a member of the community. This topic I'm hoping to speak with you on is about your non-consent item that is on the agenda relating to an amendment of your board policies, four point five. In particular, I am saddened to see that revision that primarily seems to impact citizens interim and public comment portions of board meetings, and that the changes seem to limit public feedback during a time where I feel public comment and feedback seems more necessary than ever. Given the lack of additional forums for discussion, it seems I am particularly concerned that there are items there that seem to give opposite treatment to speakers from board president-approved speakers on topics. These changes seem to include Section 1 C, which narrows the window between hosting a meeting location and time and its actual starting. Section 5 A subsection 1, limiting public speaking down to three minutes each per person. Section 5, or subsection 2 of the same section, limiting public speakers down to three people, which from my reading doesn't even afford a single speaker from each community college. Section 5 B subsection 1, allowing the board president to recognize an unlimited number of handpicked speakers for agenda items. And then the subsection 2 of the same section, removing newly created limitations from board president-recognized speakers concerning the time and the quantity of them. I am encouraging the board, if it is still feasible and possible, to reconsider the changes that are available in that non-consent item and to truly uphold their stated values of collaboration and inclusiveness, the latter of which states that we value all contributions and diverse perspectives. Thank you. Those are my statements on that.
Thank you. So with that, moving on again to your second item, you have five minutes, up to five minutes, to speak on that issue as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just a moment here. Apologies.
Sure. I won't.
So I'll start with the introduction again. Thank you, Secretary Sullivan and members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, and members of the Shared Governance Council and guests. I won't introduce myself again. and members of the Shared Governance Council and guests. I won't introduce myself again. I am standing here because today I feel like we've reached a critical juncture that requires more honest dialogue about the direction of our district and the values that we claim to uphold. And in doing so, I'm going to just reiterate some of those values that we have, you guys have already agreed to. One of them is integrity, that we foster a culture of honesty, trust, and transparency. One is respect, that we treat each other with dignity, civility, and kindness. And that inclusiveness, that we value all contributions and diverse perspectives. Recently, the district has made decisions that from my reading contradict our commitments to transparency, to dignity, and certainly to trust. I understand that these decisions have dimensions of federal retaliation, of funding complications. And I acknowledge the complex pressures you guys face as leaders, given our fundamental mission to students and given what we have to balance there. However, I must say this plainly. Your decisions may have been rational, and they may have been reasonable, but they were not right. There is a profound difference between what is expedient and what is principled. A difference between the easy path and the right path. When this district established its values, it was a promise to all members of the community. Those weren't meant to be fair-weather words. They were meant to be a guide, especially during challenging times, when adhering to them required immeasurable courage. And so this brings me to my central question to each of you individually. Where is your line in the sand? Where do each of you individually draw that line? Because from my understanding and from my reading, we've already sacrificed the groups that we've sacrificed, and we've already carved them out. And you have not been transparent about where the line in the sand is. Because if it's not the entirety of the stated mission, vision, and values, then it's not any of them. And when I ask you for the line in the sand, I mean that literally, because these are always lines in the sand. There's no outcropping or cave to huddle in when the storm comes. And there's no castle or wall to hide behind. Each of these principles and values that we hold as a society and institution is a line in the sand that we defend as individuals. They only are held as guiding principles if we draw them and we hold them there. Our institutional statements of commitment to integrity, to inclusiveness, and respect aren't shields that are going to automatically protect our community members, our students, and our staff. They have meaning only to the extent that we, particularly you as our leaders, are willing to stand behind them when they are tested. In closing, I want to emphasize the profound responsibility you've accepted by serving on this board and acknowledge the very real difficulties you face in adhering to the mission vision values against a backdrop of a turning point in our nation's history, which I believe it to be. But as representatives of our communities, you need to have that line in the sand. Drawn clear as day. And if you don't, which is fine if you don't, then with all due respect, you have an obligation to step aside and let someone who does have that line in the sand meet the challenges of today. Because these lines in the sand will still be tested. And this district deserves to have people who will still redraw them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. So we now move to consideration of the consent agenda, all items under this section of the agenda. Consent matters, excuse me, unless they are removed from the consent agenda at this time. Do any board members or you, Dr. Gonzalez, wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Being none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Being none, by a vote of six to zero with student advisory vote, the consent agenda is approved. Thank you. We're now moving on to the non-consent action item, the second read in adoption of the suggested revisions to Maricopa Community College District Governing Board Policy four point five regarding board meetings. Is there a motion to approve the revisions to the governing board policy?
So move.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Excuse me. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Being none, all those in favor vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? By a vote of six zero with support of our student advisory, vote, the provisions to the governing board policy point, four point five have been adopted. So now we're moving forward into our employment and separations of January eighteen, twenty twenty-five to February seven, twenty twenty-five. Board members, do you have any questions on that item? Next, first read of the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six residential faculty agreement effective July one, twenty twenty-five. Are there any comments or questions on that item? Being none, we'll move to the budget analysis report, Fund One for the eight months ending February twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Board members, are there any comments or questions? All right, so that concludes those items, and we now move to our community linkage reports. Ms. Jackson Long, do you have anything to report?
I guess. What was mentioned by our student leaders earlier, I did attend.
Again, very understanding.
What was mentioned earlier of our student leaders, and we had the Day of Jesse, which was a really great turnout. We were able to have, or her family members were able to come on, and we were able to, you know, really highlight and showcase to them the legacy that Jesse was able to leave behind and her impact that really touched the wide horizon of Gateway. And it was just a really great celebration and time to even just, you know, be in the midst of her presence at Gateway and, you know, plan for the future of being able to really, you know, record the history of Gateway and, you know, highlight the longevity of Gateway and people who have left their legacy behind as well. It was really great. And I really enjoyed it, and I know we really made her proud with that day. And then also recently, I was able to attend the Young Women's Conference here at Rio Salado in the same exact room. It was a, also a really great event. A lot of empowering messages and a lot of empowering women. We had doctors, we had a project manager, we had officers. It was a, one of the most, you know, inspiring moments I've had to be able to meet people and, or just women in general from all wide ranges of backgrounds and how they've been able to make great careers for themselves and their journeys and struggles and being able to bounce back and grow from them as well. So great job on that, Rio Salado, and hosting that as well. And yeah, that concludes my report.
Well, thank you very much. Ms. Butler.
Thank you very much. Well, along with Ms. Sullivan, I serve on the Audit and Finance Committee. And I, I just want to highlight, you know, we, we have this extra committee we're meeting quarterly. And I just wanted to thank Kim Grignio and her team for all of their work and transparency and providing us with all of these reports. And, and, you know, we have an opportunity to make a deeper dive into, into finances and monitoring reports and just make sure that we really have, you know, all of our eyes on it. And also highlight the fact that we have community members who are volunteering their time with audit experience, who also review all that with us. And it's been a really, it's been a great opportunity for me to just learn more about, about the system and just how all of our systems and all of our areas are, are working together. And I've been really appreciative of the opportunity to be on that committee and, and again, appreciative of, of Kim Grignio and her team and all that they are doing to provide that kind of level of transparency and accountability to all of us. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Butler. Ms. Davis.
On February twenty-eighth, I went to the musical tribute to MTV at Paradise Valley Community College. And I learned in our last board meeting that my husband's suit was not the dress, that this was eighties dress. And I, being a military wife, was out of the country for most of the eighties with no TV. So I didn't even know what the, what the eighties looked like. So between Dr. Hernandez, Dr. Schwartz, and the ladies at my manicure place, they told me to think Richard Simmons. They told me I needed to do mall bangs, which I didn't know what that was. They told me I needed a members-only jacket, which I didn't know what that was either. But I managed to go to Goodwill and make a real fool of myself by walking into this event in my rainbow-colored tights and my leg warmers and my sweatband and my fanny pack.
Wow.
So, but it was a great night. We had such a good time. And, and it was, I'm, I'm really grateful that we got to go because I dragged my husband along with me. He was, he was not also real thrilled with making him go to Goodwill with me to find something that he could wear. He wore sweatpants and a real colorful shirt, which he bought at Goodwill and has decided to keep. He really likes that shirt, but he wasn't as, and he did have a sweatband and a fanny pack, and a fanny pack. So, yeah, so we had a good time. It was really a good time, and I appreciate the invitation. It was fun. I have two things that I want to talk about that, that I really did for my, for my job job. But I attended the Maricopa Corporate College Impact Breakfast on March sixth, and it was talking about AI in the workplace. And I have heard a lot about AI in education, but I hadn't really heard much about AI in the workplace. And I have to say, it was really a great event, and I was really pleased that the corporate college, they had a lot of employers there. So, so it was a great event. And then I told Dr. Hernandez this yesterday, but my organization went to St. Mary's Food Bank to do a service project. And there were a group of young men sitting at a table, and they had red shirts on, and it said Glendale on the back. So I told my coworker, I'm going to go see what those guys are all about. So I went over there, and they were all GCC students involved in fire science. And I was, and so I asked them, where did you guys go to high school? And I was telling Dr. Hernandez, I had no earthly idea. One of them was from Bend, Oregon, and one of them was from Asheville, North Carolina. And so out of six or seven of them, two of them were from out of state. So I, I thought that that was really interesting. And then yesterday, some of us went to a design thinking event around dual enrollment, which I thought was also really good. And I'm sure that Dr. Narini and Dr. Thor will tell you more about it. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. So with that, I'm going to leap to Dr. Narini. I'm all over the place. Be prepared, I may call on you now.
Thank you. Earlier in the month, I was at Mesa for the Artists of Promise, and there's lots of promise there. There's some great art and, and great, there was performance and, and visual art. Then, Brian Spicker and I met with Awafria to talk about how the foundation might be able to support some dual enrollment in the Awafria School District and do some things with them. Then I was part of the ACCT's Impact and Success Committee, formerly, formerly Diversity Committee. And then yesterday, again, with, with Ms. Davis and, and Dr. Thor, we were at the summit. And it just shows us, we've got a lot of work to do. So with dual enrollment and early college and making sure that we support our future students and support our future economy. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith.
I participated in a few meetings over the last few weeks related to an emerging philanthropic opportunity. And I've been doing that with Brian Spicker, and I've appreciated that, and I'm really enthused about that moving forward. And all of us as board members have been engaged in a variety of e-sessions, some to prepare the statement that was read at the beginning of this meeting. And I just wanted to say to my fellow board members that I've really appreciated the way in which we have acted, I think, with great respect for one another and for the district, acting in a way that I think maintains our commitment to good integrity, collaboration, and having seven people, you know, come together and cohere on a thought in a really tumultuous time is one that I just wanted to acknowledge. Again, my deep appreciation for the level of care that I find that we are all taking as board members. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor.
Thank you. As has been referenced yesterday, I also attended the session with dual enrollment partners at Helios Education Campus. And I want to acknowledge and thank the team who planned this event. I was extremely impressed with the large number of people who were there, but also the thoughtfulness behind the invitations. Because in the group were dual enrollment teachers, high school counselors, principals, representatives of community groups that are involved in education, including representatives from the Arizona Department of Education. I was very excited about the day because of the title, which was re-envisioning college in high school. So I went into the room expecting that we were going to have a brainstorming session about how we can collectively achieve the chancellor's goal of all high school students graduating with twelve community college credits, which in my mind certainly has to go beyond dual enrollment to be able to achieve that. However, I quickly found that the mixed tables that had been put together really wanted to get down in the weeds about dual enrollment. And it was very interesting and very enlightening to me. And they're asking for more embedded advisors, stipends for the dual enrollment teachers, more communication, lower or no tuition for dual enrollment students, and easier ways to work with the colleges, particularly for those schools that work with multiple colleges. One cited that they were involved with seven different colleges. So forgive me, Kim and Leanne, but as I'm sitting there, I'm having a tremendous amount of cognitive distance over the fact that we now have a budget allocation model that compensates the colleges for dual enrollment at point one five footsie. So I'm sitting there feeling, you know, that there's no way we're going to live up to the expectations of the people that were involved in that session unless we invest in things like college in, in high school. So I continue to struggle with various aspects of the new budget allocation model and really wish, and folks at my table will, will recall, we had this discussion that rather than basing budget allocation models on what it costs us to operate a particular type of modality or program, we ought to be focusing on what do we want to invest in. So more to come. Thank you very much. And the last thing I want to say is also thank you to Dr. Kelly. I, in my thirty-plus years of being associated with the Maricopa Community Colleges, Dr. Kelly has by far been the best Chief Human Resources Officer, and I thank you for that and wish you all the best in the future. uh, Chief Human Resources Officer, and I thank you for that and wish you all the best in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Uh, you covered a lot of ground in, in your report. So you got those things out there. Yeah, I can, I can tell. Uh, okay. Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry I missed that meeting. Instead, some of us were at a PAC meeting. So uh, that's where we were. Uh, it sounds like it was very good and I look forward to hearing more from the three of you who attended. Thank you. Uh, I'm going to start off also acknowledging Dr. Kelly and say that during the time that I've had an opportunity to work with you on policies and practices and good intentions and all of that, it, it has been uh, a very rewarding experience and I appreciate the amount of time, attention and care that you brought to the district as you entered under a very turbulent time with a lot of things that needed to be rectified. And uh, your diligence and your commitment to ensuring that we began to look at the right things and did them well, stands out to me. So as you move to your retirement, I put that in quotes because knowing you, there probably is no such thing as really retirement uh, in the old definition. Um, I would hope that you find joy and peace and um, whatever it is you would like in that experience. So thank you for all that you've done. Uh, also, I have served on the Audit and Finance Committee with uh, uh, Ms. Butler and she's the chair, thank goodness. So uh, we really appreciate her contributions there. Done the PAC meetings and I've been part of national conversations um, as a result of my affiliation with the AGB, uh, which leads me to say that we'll be in Chicago next week. Not just for the AGB conference, but also I will be attending board meetings at that time. Uh, I, I want to say something, which I always do. So thank you for indulging me. I want to say that I'm really grumpy these days. And I've apologized to my colleagues for my comment and Dr. Gonzalez and others for being grumpy. Um, but I find that the grumpiness that I'm experiencing is tied to frustration, to challenge, to despair. And to the point about how do I feel when I put my head on the pillow every night? Uh, you know, I've always tried to pride myself in doing the right thing so that I could close my eyes and go to sleep. It's really a struggle these days to find the equilibrium necessary to engage in thoughtful shared governance conversations and hold aside perhaps personal thoughts and personal prejudice, prejudices that I can do outside of this board. But when I sit with this board, I serve as a collaborator, a participant in shared governance with the primary thought that collectively, as one of seven people uh, and our board uh, student advisor, that we really are charged with being one in how we engage and how we respond to the world in front of us. So I appreciate the um, words that you used, Ms. Smith, and how articulate you were in expressing and expressing what many of us um, are going through. And I want to acknowledge the goodwill of every single person with whom I'm seated at this table today. And want to say that I'm really, really trying hard not to be grumpy because I want to be compassionate, courageous in working with my colleagues to keep in mind one thing. And that is to be invested in every single person who crosses our paths within this community and this district. So bear with me and my grumpiness. Um, promise to constantly have a sense of humor somewhere. But it's hard these days to not be grumpy. So if I cross your path and I'm grumpy, please forgive me. Um, so with that, uh, I think we're through with comments for the evening. And I'd like to remind everyone that on April eighth, we will have an agenda review at four thirty via WebEx. And on April twenty second, the regular board meeting is scheduled for six thirty here. I have no known um, work, study or e-session or anything that may be attached to that meeting that may be to come. And certainly within Ms. Bittersmith's purview to schedule. So with that, I'm going to thank everyone for their time tonight. Want to say go forward and uh, do your best on behalf of all those that we serve. And thank you for your service uh, to this community and this district. So let the record reflect that it is now seven fifty PM and thank you everyone and good night.